It is 6:30 and I will call our planning board meeting to order of March 20th, 2025. And I'll begin with a roll call. And I'll just read it off my document here. All right, so. Roll call. John Crist, myself, I am present. Susan Wood is excused this evening. Is she joining us via Zoom? Do you know? She said she might or might not.
She would try to based on her service, but she's not in at this time.
Okay. Phil, as our non-recording secretary, is now off the board. He's on the select board. Neil, our select board rep, is also going to serve tonight. And we'll get to the alternates in a second.
He's no longer on the select board.
Okay, he's no longer on the select board, yes. It's a lot of moving parts.
It's a lot of moving parts.
Mike Ahern at Yeton. And Jason Ninos, who is also on the select board now and has left for the evening. And alternate members, Zach Terrell from the select board, right there, and Brad Puffer. Molly McCann is, she might be late this evening or might not make it at all. She has another appointment that she has a hard time getting back from. And Jason is now on the select board. Okay. So that gives us one, two, three, four, okay, five, six. And so Brad, I will seat you as a voting member this evening.
All right.
And we have a quorum, despite all the shuffling about. And up first then is the, well, first after the roll call, is the election of officers. So at this point, we have to choose a chair, a vice chair, and a non-recording secretary. And I will say that I did have some communication with Sue, just to check in with her, because I knew she probably wouldn't be here, and I wanted to see if she was willing to serve as an officer. And she said yes to vice chair or non-recording secretary.
And I'd like to make a nomination for chair.
Okay.
As much that I've given you a lot of credit, John. I think you have done a great service with your preparedness. But I do feel that Matt has done an exceptional job as one of the newer members. He's put his time in. I think he would make an incredible chair, so I would nominate Matt Yeton as chair, Sue Wood as vice chair, and Michael Bouchard as recording secretary.
Non-recording secretary.
Non-recording secretary.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second, that one.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
I, good nominations. I think that having John step entirely out of the officership seems maybe a little extreme, in my opinion. You know, he's done a great job and with as much change as there is in this board, having some continuity there, whether that's, you know, vice chair and non-recording secretary. It seems like, you know, a complete change of the full board or full officer of the board seems like a pretty big swing, especially when you're going to have a lot of new members come in.
I'd be willing to, if Michael's okay with, if I take back my nomination and put John as non-recording secretary. I could go either way. I agree with Zach, that's a good point.
What are the roles of the non-recording secretary? I'm not too familiar with that.
So is it a non-recording, like typically a secretary would be recording and taking notes and stuff like that. A non-recording secretary really has no role, except being third in line if the chair and vice chair are not present to take over and run a meeting.
So that's why we choose Phil sometimes when it comes to that, when...
So if either I or Sue were unavailable, then Sue would be third in line.
That makes sense.
So it's kind of like a vice chair in that sense. There's the secretary part, there's not much really in that.
Makes sense.
Unless you really have...
I would, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Unless you really want to stay as, my nomination is, as non-recording secretary, Michael. You're okay with advocating?
A hundred percent okay.
If you're okay with reseconding my, changing it to John, non-recording secretary.
I'd be honored to chair, but I think that keeping, exactly what you said, keeping John involved at that echelon of, you know, within that three is extremely important.
I think so.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Any further discussion?
So is that, was that modified now that you just spoke? So where do we stand right now?
So we've got Matt for chair, Sue as vice chair, and John Crist as the non-recording secretary, who has also the ability, if no one's around to sign a plat, the non-recording secretary, I believe, can sign for him. That was my understanding.
I'm not even certain, actually.
Yeah, so basically, in the absence, has full authority of the chair in the absence of both the chair and vice chair. So it's essentially, you know, I can actually read, if it would be helpful, the description of each of the officers. The chair shall preside over all meetings and hearings, shall appoint committees as directed by the board, shall affix his or her signature in the name of the board, shall appoint alternate members to replace absent or disqualified board members, and shall, in consultations with the town planner, set the agenda for each meeting with a 10:00 PM adjournment in mind. The vice chair shall preside in the absence of the chair and shall have full power of the chair on matters that come before the board during the absence of the chair. And then the non-recording secretary will assume the duties of the vice chair in the absence of either the chair or the vice chair. And in the absence of both chair and vice chair, the non-recording secretary will assume the duties of the chair and shall have full powers of the chair on matters that come before the board during the absence of the chair and vice chair. So it's sort of that chain. If the chair's not there, the vice chair can fill in. If the vice chair and chair are not there, the non-recording secretary can fill in for those chair responsibilities.
This will be effective as of our beginning of our next meeting?
This will be effective as of immediate.
It's immediate, yeah. That's why you have to do it as the first agenda item, because...
You take over the meeting.
Well, I accept that nomination I would want. I do think that if you wanted to, you'd more than welcome to finish this meeting in that.
No, it's all yours. If you become chair, it's all yours.
If that was the fate, there should still be some pondering for some moving forward, but something we could work through.
I'm sure the vice chair and the present chair now, that would become the recording secretary, could help you through. And you got it in you, Matt. I remember when I first joined the planning board and Ray Gosney was the chair, my first or second meeting, he says, "You're going to be chair before too long." And I enjoyed that confidence, and I have that same confidence in you, Matt.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I guess I have to ask Matt, you want to do that? I mean...
Yep, I'm going to abstain from a vote, being it's for myself.
Yep.
Okay, two ayes.
I think you do good, Matt.
Thank you.
Personally, myself, I do. So I'll second that, I guess.
Okay, is that a aye?
Yes.
Okay.
Opposed? Nay?
Nay.
End of sessions.
I abstain.
I abstain.
All right, so the motion does not pass with a vote of two to two to two.
Okay. Is there another nomination?
Is there a way to renominate the past nomination and hope for a different result?
If you'd like.
I would nominate Matt as chair, Sue as vice chair, and John as non-recording secretary.
I'll second that.
All right. Is there any further discussion?
So where is it right now? Who's chair?
Matt, I nominated Matt as chair, Sue as vice chair, and John as non-recording secretary.
I have a question before we go to a vote.
Did we get a second on that?
There was no second on that.
Did Matt second it?
Oh, no, you did, that's right. I'm sorry.
Oh, you seconded it, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah.
This goes back to sort of our abstention and not abstaining, like, so the vote is for me to be chair, which I'm open to chairing the board. So should I be abstaining from this vote? Like, I'm just trying to make sure I'm not overstepping a boundary, or...
That's your personal call.
Okay.
You're also not required to, in the case of voting for yourself.
Okay, so you can vote for yourself and you're not...
The rule around abstention is if we were discussing something that had a personal benefit to you financially, a piece of your property, and a budding piece of your property, something you had an investment in, something like that, that would be a time to abstain. But in the case of a vote, you have no obligation to abstain.
So there's a motion and a second for the same slate of candidates. And I guess the, the one part that makes me a little uncomfortable here is that we have a nomination coming, who is still today on the board, but has withdrawn his letter of reappointment and with some bit of discussion about that. And procedurally, there's nothing wrong with that. It does seem a little peculiar. So I'm not saying it can't happen. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions?
I'll abstain.
I'll remain in an abstention state.
That's three ayes? Okay, so here you go. Congratulations.
John? And moving on to the next, just, do you need anything else for the election of officers?
Nope, that's, that's all set. Officers are a one-year term, so the next election will be, unless there's a vacancy in an officership, will be after the next town meeting, the first regular meeting following town meeting.
All right, excellent. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, review of minutes from March 6, 2025.
Matt, before we move from that, can I just quickly just give a summary of where we're at in terms of membership and what the new laws mean in terms of the board makeup?
Yeah, do you want to like to go over that now? No, no, please.
Just, it feels like interjecting that at this point, both for the public watching this board and for this board at large, might be helpful. So things that have changed, as you heard John mention at the start of the meeting, Phil Lemaireau, Jason Ninos, and Neil MacIver, due to the select board election results, all immediately disqualified from the planning board. So they were no longer able to serve. Both Sue and Mike, their term ends this year, and Sue still has her letter in. I don't think we voted on her letter yet at the select board.
No.
And Mike has rescinded his letter for requesting, requesting reappointment. So assuming the, the select board reappoints Sue, Sue would be reappointed for what I believe will be more than one year. I think it will be more than one year. The RSA on appointments, which you can, anybody who's paying a lot of attention, it's 673: 5, talks about how the, the membership should be, or elections should be staggered. And in particular, we have a seven-member board, one appointed select board member and three now elected members, appointed at the moment, but will transition to elected. And it says that they should be staggered. It also talks in the other RSA, and this is like the following of spaghetti, it talks about the other, in the other RSA, it talks about appointing them, again, on a, filling them on a staggered basis at subsequent regular town elections. So, so that's interesting. So I think that what will happen is we will elect two members next year for three-year terms, because it's also specific about three-year terms. I think we'll elect as a town next year, two members as a three-year term, and there will remain four appointed members on the board. Then the subsequent year, two more, and there will be two appointed and four elected. And then in the following year, we'll elect the remaining folks. The other thing that changes slightly is your alternates are all effective immediately appointed by this board. They're no longer appointed by the select board. So you have, this board has complete control of the alternates, and the select board will appoint to fill the full-seeded members.
Okay. And will there be an issue with the staggering of the, of not having more than three elected, elected planning board members in one year, in one election term?
So the, so the RSA says very specifically, you, on a seven-member board, you can't elect more than three in a given election year. So I think that what we will do is, is set the appointments, so it sets up that 2-2-2 staggering with each one serving a three-year term. So very similar to the select board, there's five instead of six elected positions. But we end up electing two select board members, two select board members, one select board member. In the case of the planning board, I think it'll be 2-2 and 2 going forward in infinitum. And then once, once the board is fully filled with elected planning board members, then the planning board takes over, appointing the, any vacancies. Somebody leaves the board mid-cycle or gets elected to the select board mid-cycle, then the planning board would take that over. But not until it's a fully elected board.
Yep, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yes.
If it's six elected for three-year terms, would it make sense to do 2-2-2?
Yeah, I think that's, that is, the RSA states that it should be a 2-2-2 stagger. Yeah.
That would make, that would make perfect sense.
The lawyer that we've been talking to, I think advised us incorrectly on this. I reread it today and I highlighted it, so I need to send him a follow-up. He suggested it was going to be two-year terms and that we would elect four this coming year. But I think that the RSA is clear that you can't elect more than three, and it should be on a 2-2-2 stagger with three-year terms. So I just need to follow up with him and say, hey, I think, you know, a lot of moving pieces, I think you missed this piece.
And it looks like the longest, and I think someone said this chart is probably not accurate, because I think the longest two serving is John and Sue, after today.
After today, it would be John and Michael, at least according to the website, because it says Michael's term, according to the website, Michael's term expires 2026 and John's term expires 2026. Sue's term expires at the same time as yours.
Right, and if she gets reappointed, but I thought it was the longest serving goes up for the vote first.
No, it's based on their expiration.
Okay.
So John, Sue, I'm sorry, John, Michael, and Phil, if Phil were still on the board, his term would have also ended in 2026. That's what, that's based on the current staggering, but I think...
So likely, we would elect Michael and John's positions at the coming election year, and Sue and Phil's will be appointed to land at the right stagger to get us 2-2-2.
So Phil's, Phil's spot would be then filled with, is it Matt? Because Phil's not on the board anymore.
Phil's spot would be appointed by the select board.
Say that again?
Phil's spot will be appointed by the select board.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
But then if it were bumped back to be staggered 2-2-2, yeah, Matt does fall currently on the one, the year where one person comes up, so it would be adding basically into sync with, with Matt's term. As I understand it, that it would be basically, as, you know, and John, as I, as I understand what you're saying, and then Matt and Phil, as it were, followed by the other, the other two terms. So it would, and I guess what I had discussed with Scott was more based on the, the letter, so we'll look into that.
We'll have to, we have to double-check it.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I can give you the highlighted RSA's, just so that you have those for reference.
Thank you. And I think the other thing that, you know, we had discussed was just discussing this, this very other question with the board of, if it was, you know, assuming the board wants to emphasize that 2-2-2 is the, is the preferred method for this board, too. I mean, there's a lot of benefits to having 2-2-2, whereas if you have a 1-3-5, you could have three people running for one seat, one year, have a very competitive election, you could have three people running for three seats the next year. It's a little more fair to the people who, no one's advantaged by being in the three-year rotation versus being in the one, or the three-seat rotation versus the one. All elections are kind of on equal footing and equally competitive number of seats. So there's, there's really a...
This is a real advantage to having it that way. And I, and I think that everything that's, that's here with the RSA is, will allow the select board to get us on that cycle.
Yeah, I think it'll take a little bit of working, but I think that'll probably be the advantageous cycle.
All right, sorry for all of that.
Nope, that's, that was in good timing, thank you. Any other questions on the current topic before we move on? All right, let's move on to review of minutes from the March 6 meeting.
I'd make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Do we have a second on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then nays?
I'm abstaining because I have a sentence.
All abstain. All right, the minutes are approved as written. Communications received by the board. Joseph?
Yeah, thank you. We have, very related to the, to the discussion we just had about terms, we do have a few letters requesting appointment, that is, requesting to fill those seats. So some of, it sounds like the select board will be sifting through which term will be filled for which amount of time to appropriately space out the positions. But we have newly before the board tonight, letters of requesting for appointment to fill terms until a future election, Neil MacIver, Molly McCann, and Bradford Puffer. And then we also have a matter of a planning board recommendation to the select board about reappointment of John Crist to Lakes Region Planning Commission. So again, these are for planning board review slash recommendation to the, to the select board for either planning board terms or, in the other letter's case, the LRC. I don't know if you want me to sort of go through each one individually, or if you want the folks to, to read through their letters, up to you.
If you could go through each one, that'd be great, thank you.
Sure. So we have, so I'll, I can read, since it's first here, if you'd like, I can read Molly's letter, since Molly's not present, and then Brad, and then I can read Neil's letter as well, since Neil's not present, if you'd like to proceed that way.
Thank you.
So from Molly, to the select board members, please accept my request to be appointed to the Plymouth Planning Board as a full voting member from my current position as an alternate. I recognize that I am not the most senior candidate, however, I feel strongly that I am well-prepared and ready to serve the town of Plymouth as a full member. I am committed to the planning process, to continued engagement with the public, and to the continued improvement of Plymouth for all its citizens. I appreciate the work it takes to be an effective planning board member, and I feel fortunate to have the opportunity to do such work. My training as a landscape architect and educator prepares me for this role. I have demonstrated my commitment to becoming a well-informed planning board member throughout my ongoing preparations for and engagements with our meetings since my initial appointment. As described in my appointment request from June 2024, I am a product of the Plymouth Public School System and the community assets that are part of the town. I have lived in various parts of the country, from the Rocky Mountains to the Midwest. My master's degree in landscape architecture gave me the training to think about the future of communities from multiple points of view, from conservationists to developers, and I hope to continue to bring this training to bear on my role as a board member. My main goal remains the same. I wish to see Plymouth continue to flourish and be a place where people can find home. Thank you for your consideration, Molly McCann. And then from Neil MacIver, Dear Scott and members of the board, this is my formal request for appointment to the planning board and the Conservation Commission. I have a BA from Plymouth State, a JD from Widener University, and have completed graduate studies at UNH. While serving in the NH Legislature, I served on the Municipal and County Government Committee and the Committee on Resources and Development. As a professional, I am a certified wetland scientist, certified professional in erosion and sediment control, licensed subsurface designer and evaluator, and a member of the Soil Scientists Society of Northern New England, HTE Northeast Environmental Engineering of Bedford, New Hampshire, employed me as an environmental scientist on major construction projects. If it is possible, I would like to fill the remaining time of Phil Lemaireau's term on the planning board and also serve as an alternate on the Conservation Commission. I will greatly appreciate your consideration, Neil MacIver.
Thank you, Joseph.
Just one more.
And then Brad, or I can read Brad, or if you want to talk about your, your request, or you want me to read your letter? Okay. Mr. Reed and select board and planning board members, I'm writing to express my interest in the open full member seat on the planning board. Over the past year, as a senior alternate member, I would like to further contribute as a full, as a full member. Thank you for considering my application. I look forward to the opportunity to continue serving our community. Bradford Puffer. And so those are the three for planning board positions.
Matt, before we begin, may I, may I ask a question?
Sure, please.
So I'm actually curious, Zach, and anyone else here, what we think of the process? I know we've been changing up the process to make it more responsive and less reactive in some ways to like the first letter that comes in and all that kind of stuff that was happening. And, and I've still heard frustration about the way the process works.
Yes.
And I'm curious if you have any thoughts about this? I mean, I was thinking about, like, do we need to actually, like, do interviews with people? Or, like, I'm curious, like, if you have any thoughts about how to go forward.
It's a, it's a great question. So we, we got a lot of feedback on the select board about this process during the, the conversation that you all had, both about Sue and about Mike in this last cycle. And so I know that both, both of the incoming new select board members do not like the process as it sits. Both Jason and Phil have expressed that they think that it should not work the way that it does. So I can be assured that it's going to be a topic of conversation at the select board. We have two new members who feel strongly that the current process is not working. From my personal observation, I would tend to agree that it needs adjustment. I don't think that it's working exactly as we hoped. I think the board was seeing a lot of nominations and didn't necessarily have context in a given person's participation in the board. So it was, it's hard, you know, to be, if you're, think about the last cycle, if you're Neil MacIver, he had been sitting here a lot, he had a lot of context. I generally watch the YouTube videos, I have reasonable context. The other three members of the board don't interact with Mike Bouchard, so they don't know, is this a good member of this board? Like, are they a strong person? So we were looking for... So we were looking for, how can we get some feedback on the participation of them? Is this person absent a lot? Do they contribute to the conversation? Do they have the right skills to be a good member of this board? What I think we neglected to see is that this is a political board. There's certainly a, a component of what this board does that's, that's not necessarily political, but there is a political component to this board. And as such, that can create some tensions, some strains, and some discomfort around being able to say, I actually think that maybe this person shouldn't be on the board. It's very easy when you've got somebody who is, you know, beloved and everybody loves working with, you know, that's generally easy. But if there's, if there's any sort of like conflict or friction or anything going on on the board, we exacerbate that friction by asking the board to spend time, you know, creating a recommendation. So I think to John's point, we are going to be talking about doing more of an interview-style process. You know, come in, tell us what you've been doing, you know, that kind of thing. I can't say that's certainly what we're going to do, because we haven't reformed our board for this cycle. And so we haven't had that conversation. But I'm, I'm projecting that I believe that's the case. If this board wanted to take these three and say, we're actually going to make no recommendation, because these are three members of our board, all, three members recently of our board. I know Neil was indirect. Three members who've served on our board in the past year. We actually, we abstain from making a recommendation. I don't think that has an unreasonable position for this board to take, especially given that you've got three. I, I don't know as the six of us are going to have a great debate about which of these three to recommend. That might actually create a very awkward situation. And so if this board was to say, actually, we abstain and recommend that the Select Board do some, some work to have conversations with Brad, Neil, Molly, and come to a recommendation, I think that might be the right thing, given the context, but certainly.
I appreciate that.
It's on you.
Thank you. Well, no, I, I, and I do think that that's, that this, it hasn't worked as smooth as I think it was thought. And it hasn't been in place for long, maybe a little over a year. But I know that every time it comes up, that it's, the controversial is the right word, but just not working smoothly as we expected.
It's tricky.
Yeah. Does anyone have a motion to make in regards to this topic of, with the three suggestions? Do we have to make a motion on this, Joseph?
I, I move we table this and hand it over to the Select Board.
I would second that, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And nays? Abstentions. Thank you. All right, excellent. Moving on to John's letter. John, would you like to read your letter?
Or is that Joseph's too?
Uh, Joseph, I can probably, I'll hear this, I can read it, okay. I didn't have a copy in front of me. Dear Scott Whedon and members of the Select Board, I am writing to request reappointment to the Lakes Region Planning Commission. Having served the town of Plymouth as a Commissioner on the LRPC since 2023, with a consistent record of attendance, I have come to know and have established positive working relationships with many of my fellow Commissioners. In 2024, I was invited to join the Executive Board as an at-large member, where I am able to even better advocate for our needs and represent our experiences here in Plymouth. I look forward to continuing to serve Plymouth as an LRPC Commissioner for another term and represent our community's perspectives and needs going forward. Thank you for your time, John Crist. Thank you, Mike.
Are you guys into full string of meetings again? Because I knew the winter was a little slow.
So the winter was slow. We had our first Executive Board meeting last week, I think it was, last Wednesday? And our first Commissioner meeting again coming up on Monday evening. And, and I will say, I mean, it's worth noting, part of our discussion, it wasn't their whole discussion by any means, the RPCs, all the regional planning commissions, and as well as like OPD, the Office of Plan and Development, receive like 70, 80-plus percent of their funding from the federal government. And at this point, it's all back in place and moving forward. But there's a little bit of uneasiness there.
I'm sure.
And we talked about other things as well. And, yeah, but that's certainly an interesting conversation.
Excellent. I, I could only imagine, yeah. Well, thank you for putting your time in on this board. I think it's, and we have more representation now that you and Bill are.
The Bill is still a member, I believe. And his term is not up this year. And Neil is the alternate.
Okay. Excellent.
Yeah, and I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how that'll play out either. I think that it's okay for us to nominate, well, I mean, Bill's still on the board, but, or actually, Bill's not on the board, I'm sorry.
On the board.
So his, I think it's okay for us to still appoint somebody who's not on a current Select Board, Planning Board, zoning board, but we're going to have to do some confirmation on that to make sure Bill.
My understa, I, I know people who are not on either of those boards.
Not on any land use or thing.
I'm pretty sure, I, I think I'm pretty sure there are people who are not on any land use. But I know there are people who are on like more historical, sort of like.
Okay. I mean, Bill's representation there has been good, and I think if we can keep him there, it gives us that historical.
I think there is flexibility.
So we, I just want to make sure we're confirmed on that, but yeah.
And I might add.
Excuse me, gentlemen, if you're going to continue to have a conversation, do you mind going outside? It's just starting to be untroubled, but thanks.
I was prepared by the hour, so we're debating things.
Thank you. All right, sorry about that, Mike.
Oh.
Once I started to hear it, it was.
Now that Bill is not going to be on the Select Board, the Monday nights are more free for him to attend. So that's positive.
Could be a win-win, yeah. Yeah.
Well, I like the idea of you continuing to be here, representing us, thank you.
I mean, I think it's a great sign of how good a job John has done on LRPC that they wanted him on the exec board. Right. I think that's.
That's new, right? That was probably your first meeting at the, on the exec board? Or it's a newer?
That, that happened last fall, I think, yeah. September, Octoberish, I think.
I think it's good representation and if we can continue moving forward with having as much as we can and.
I mean, the fact that we have two Executive Board members from Plymouth is, I think, pretty good.
Yeah. Do we have a motion at all?
Make a motion to appoint, to recommend to the Select Board that they reappoint John Crist as a representative for Plymouth.
Thank you, Michael. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions.
All abstain.
All abstain as well.
Well, excellent, recommendation for John on stay on LRPC. Thank you, John. Joseph, any other communications were received or is that all for tonight?
That's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Now, moving on to applications and public hearings. We're going to be looking at a site plan review application for Three Lakes Properties of Hamilton Way. This is a review and continued public hearing related to the site plan application. The application is to establish and expand a retail landscape material sales and retail greenhouse space on the parcels listed here, merge into two parcels and locate on both sides of Hamilton Way. This is a continuation from previous session where we went over this. Any discussions before we ask for the applicant to speak?
If you want me to just give a brief update?
That'd be great.
Sure. So we did receive an updated plan set from the applicant. And I do allude to this in my staff report too. It's a new plant, site plan set with a date of 3/12/25. And so it, it is a new revision date on the site plan page itself. There's also a revised stormwater drainage analysis, which also has a revised date of March, I believe, yeah, also March 12th, 2025. So the plan did address some of the questions that the board raised in the previous hearing. The parking spaces that were within the setback were relocated out of the setback. And then the pergola that was located within the setback was also relocated out of the setback. The two, the, the yard shack that was located within the front setback still appears to be located within the front setback on the revised plan. And then the landscape material storage bays also still appear to be within the, the side setbacks. And then the last piece is that there was the woodshed, the matter of the woodshed, that was partially in the drainage easement, and that appears to have been relocated out of the drainage easement. So some of the items had been relocated, and a couple of them are still in their, in their prior locations. No further, oh, and then the, the drainage report was also revised, but still shows no increase in runoff at the two, 10, and 25-year storm event.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments at all at the moment?
Which building is the yard shack?
If the applicant wants to get up and speak and join us, please feel free.
This building?
Yep.
Oh, okay. And that's an existing structure? Not something new.
It's always is your deep voice.
That's great.
Once I honed in on it.
Joseph, Mario Foguero, Brown Engineering. Joseph, Joseph covered all of it, really. We had that meeting last month. We took some notes, we went back and shifted the structures out of the setback. We eliminated the parking that was in the right of way in the setback with the 15 feet. The pergola moved. We addressed everything we could, with the exception of the, the storage bays. And the yard shack, I don't recall that being brought up at the last meeting. That's an existing yard shack. We understand that it's shown to be slightly encroaching in the, in the right of way there. That's where we're at. So we would like to, we have an idea what the board may do if they follow the staff report. And we'd like to discuss that process and.
Question? So I believe according to our council, we've been advised that the storage bays are structures. And so that's what our town, I believe, is advising us. Is that correct, Joseph?
Yes, and, and thank you for, for the question. I should have mentioned that in my first introduction. I did talk with Building Inspector Tom Newcomb. And then we obtained advice from, from Town Council suggesting that these, these do meet the, the definition of accessory structure and as such would be subject to the setbacks.
So with that said, is, I know we talked about this extensively last time. I don't necessarily feel comfortable approving this with structures in the setback. We talked about this. And I'm wondering what your thoughts are on that?
Yep, we kind of anticipated the board have that position as they should, especially after seeking counsel. We'd be amendable to, well, we're hoping to receive a conditional approval. And the condition being, seek a special exception with that encroachment. And if we are unable to acquire that special exception, then the wall will be moved. And it, for it, the difficulty here is, the applicant has begun building that wall. It's not complete, but he began building it, and maybe rightfully so, under the impression that the 2019 approval showed that these walls are able to be built within the setback. I know that's not the town's position, and we're not trying to argue that. But that's where we are today, is that the wall is partially built. And that's why I didn't respond, we made all the changes that we could. We moved everything that's not there. And the only reason why that wall hasn't been moved in our resubmission is because it's partially there. And we, we'd like to have a conditional approval and go seek that special exception.
I guess, I have a question. What stops us from getting to the certain point where, say, a conditional approval is granted and the wall, the construction on the wall can, the bins continues? And then eventually it's, well, the bins are now all constructed.
My understanding, that would be a compliance issue and it would go to the Building Inspector and whoever's inspecting the construction. Might, that'd be my understanding, Joseph?
Yeah, it kind of, you know, order of operations is, is a piece of that conversation. So yeah, if, if a, if the board were to make a conditional approval such as that and a special exception weren't obtained, and the bins were to continue to be, to be built, you know, in, in that location, that would, that, that could be something that could be referred to the, the code enforcement officer as a, as a, you know, potential violation of either a site plan approval of the board or of the zoning.
So either, it's, it's out of sort of our, honestly, out of our hands, but it's not something that we're addressing if, if that were to be the case.
Correct, and the board, sorry, go ahead.
No, that, that was it, though.
Yeah, the board could always, if, if there was a concern that a board member had, the board could schedule a compliance hearing at that, at that time. If the board, if, if a board member or the board felt that it was uncertain whether a conditional approval was being followed, the board could hold a compliance hearing. And in fact, at a compliance hearing, the board does have the authority to say, you need to take corrective action, or we will revoke the approval. So the board does have some role if the board decided to pursue that. But customarily, the, the typical procedure would be a, you know, either a violation of a site plan approval, which would be enforceable by the, the town code officer. And then the other possibility would be a zoning, a zoning violation. So it is, there are a few different routes it could go, I guess, to, to give kind of a long-winded answer to your question.
Oh, thank you. Hope that helps, thanks. Mike?
Couple of questions, I guess. John, in your research, did you, was there determination that it was many structures or one structure?
I, I'm not sure I did any research. I'm just relying on the Town Council.
Joseph, do you, was it considered one structure or many structures?
Um, it was, we, we didn't have one way or the other. That wasn't, that wasn't part of the, what we got from, from Town Council. So I, I would say we don't have a, it didn't weigh in on that.
Is, I guess I have a comment and then a question for the applicant. Structure have to have, geez, I guess, this, this question won't make sense. What's Plan B if you don't get your special exception?
Move the wall.
Pack it in, be done, I don't know. Either way, it creates a hardship.
Lot line adjustment would be another potential angle?
We've been reaching out to that owner.
We've found through research, the guy's phone number, lives in Sugar Hill. Called twice, but I haven't had luck connecting with him. I don't know. I mean, he seems to be of an age, maybe he's away with, on vacation or something with his family. Just being, knowing that's college break and other things. But for whatever reason, I can't get ahold of him at this point. But who's going to, you know, keep in that effort, I guess? Hoping. I mean, the frustration is, you know, I did have approval in 2019, and these are the drawings for it. I mean, you can argue back and forth on structure. If you call it a, a wall, which you're allowed to build on your property line, then there isn't an issue. Yeah, I mean, you, there's areas through town without pointing fingers that have a sort of similar thing that just don't hold bins, it holds back parking lots where cars park. I don't see how that's much different. They come, they go, the material comes and goes. I mean, I don't know. You call it one thing, it's this, you call it that, then I'm where we are today. I mean, I'm not a cookie cutter store. I'm trying to use all of my space to the best of my ability. The lots are tough. I mean, they're obviously designed to put a, you know, Starbucks in the middle of the property, parking lot, green grass. So I'm not a, not a cookie cutter box store. So all my product is portable, movable.
Other than the bins on this, does anyone else have, are there any other concerns that arise that, other than the bins?
I'm curious to hear more, which I know we briefly touched on last time, about the master sign plan and why you decided to go that route rather than, I know we kind of like, provisionally said it's probably a go, but like, obviously, we couldn't make that decision last night because we weren't actually approving or disapproving last night. But do you have any thoughts about that, or can you say a bit more about that?
On the sign?
The sign plan?
My understanding last night, knew that when you guys looked at it, that it was fine as is. I didn't hear any questions specifically. I own several parcels of land. That's why I went for a larger sign. I also know in the verbiage that it did say it was up for debate on the size and what it can be, and you can exceed it. I mean, I own five parcels of land there, which in my mind is equivalent to a market basket development that has a large sign, or Boulder Point that has multiple signs. You know, acreage-wise, I have about 10 acres there. So, yeah, I mean, I'm paying a lot of tax dollars. I'm trying to just, you know, maximize anything that might draw people in. So I...
Thank you.
Thought that that was approved.
That's kind of what I was asking, I guess. That's like what your justification was. I mean, I know last time we kind of non-bindingly said, yeah, it's probably fine. I was just kind of curious to learn a bit more about what your, like, thoughts were about going that extra length.
I mean, I think we've worked hard with the board to try to move this in the right direction, to be as most compliant as possible. The yard shack is less of an issue, you know. I mean, that I can also deal with. The bins is really my hardship and difficulty there. I mean, it is a retaining wall. It's holding back grade. If I have to pull the blocks away from it, then so be it. I mean, I don't, I, we're getting hung up on verbiage of which way it is or what it is.
I mean, you mentioned it's difficult to get a vehicle in there. Is there anything, it seems like a lot of space to me. Is there anything I'm not seeing looking at the plan?
When you are personally on the property and you take a 10-wheeler, you drive it, made it aligned, to back it into the bin, it does 110% create that difficulty. Bringing in a 55-foot-long tractor trailer, it does create that difficulty.
I guess that might be a zoning ward.
Yeah, I mean, it's large, they're large tractor trailers. I mean, they come in daily. I mean, my property's been here since 2019 with zero complaints. You know, I was just trying to come to the board to get approval. We started, I probably wouldn't be in such of an issue if this wasn't, you know, if I started this in August and hit a road block with the SWP plan, which nothing has changed from August. There would, this wouldn't have been pushed, I wouldn't have started building more and be in the current situation. I needed to be operational for the winter. Needless to say, I pushed on a bit. I didn't view it as anything different that was approved in 2019. So I currently sit where I am. You know, I might have stepped out of rotation a little bit, but didn't really feel like I was over exceeding what could be done or built because it's, they're permanent, they're not permanent block.
Right, they're not pinned.
They're waste block from person's concrete. They're two-by-four blocks. They sit there by gravity. And so, you know, I'm kind of pigeonholed now at this moment, I guess. So, I mean, I, you know, now I'm $20,000 into this and still have a, up in the air kind of thing. And this is what I was alluding to in August, you know. Your problem, I understand that. It's my own, but I, you know, this is where we are.
If I may, I do, I mean, one of the things you said caught my attention, which was, like, you haven't had any complaints. I mean, part of this board's job is to anticipate potential complaints going forward. So if the parcel next to you gets sold, the next owner might have a complaint. And we have to, you know, anticipate that, which is why we have these rules. And again, according to council, if they say, like, these are structures. And for me at least, that means, as you said, if you're willing to go for a special exception, then I guess that's what it is then.
Yeah, I mean, this was $2,000 for permitting and outshoot and more hourly.
Do you see what he's saying with, yes, a car can get in there and turn around, but, or a tractor trailer that's delivered, maybe that's where, or not maybe, but that's where it comes in, but I understand what you're saying, Molly.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, not at all.
Uh, may I speak, Chair? Yes?
You may.
You're the chair. Oh, okay, all right. Hello. Thank you, Chair.
Before you, before you, I don't know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, you can put her in as a voting member tonight.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so Mike, do you mind if I interrupt for once?
No, go for it.
My question was going to be that, do we wait till after the item if we're gonna add someone to it, was my understanding?
Ultimately, your discretion. Sometimes, you know, if an alternate has not been present throughout a whole review of an application, they would wait, but it, you can certainly still seat an alternate, and then that member could decide if they would like to abstain or not. But, yeah, it's fully within the Chair's discretion to seat alternates.
All right. I feel like you've been in attendance and are up to speed with us. I'll leave the option up to you, if you'd like to. We will seat you as a voting member for this, and if you'd like to, you're welcome.
All right, thank you.
Please continue.
So, do you currently have deliveries coming into the bays towards Tunny Mountain Highway through the back? And would that, the new bays that you're hoping to build, would they be receiving trucks in the same way? Or do you have the same challenges with the ability and the truck in the front bays as compared to these proposed back bays?
I do if the space shifts. It's just the length of the back end to the bin gets smaller and smaller.
Yeah, okay. Because it seems like the front bays have, well, I guess that's why the front bays are where they are, is because of delivery.
The front bays are where they were because that's how it presented in 2019, and approval was granted, and, you know. Still in the same sort of mindset. I mean, I'm not right on the boundary line, but obviously within this area that we're debating on.
Right. And may I ask a review question?
Please.
It sounds, it seems like there's a kind of conflict between what the council town has told us versus what's being said here about them being retaining walls versus structures. Is that correct?
That is correct. Joseph, do you mind recapping, just updating us on that?
Thank you, I'm sorry about that.
I forgot that was one pertinent thing that we did get information from.
I remember, yeah.
Yeah, so the question was about the classification of the storage bays.
Right.
Yep. So we did, at the board's request, I did first talk to Building Inspector Tom Newcomb.
Yep.
And then we obtained advice from council about how these should be classified. And the advice we received was that they should be, that they were accessory structures and were subject to, would be subject to that requirement. So that was our recommendation to the board, because that's what we received in our research with council.
But the applicant is calling them retaining walls.
That would be correct.
If that's the verbiage that needs to be used, then we can all agree.
Well, it's acting as both.
It is acting as a retaining wall. It holds back four and a half feet of grade.
Yeah.
If I may clarify?
Yeah.
I believe the applicant has also mentioned that they are willing to potentially go for a special exception.
Okay. That does seem like a good solution.
Yep.
Thank you for the recap.
If there's the ability to skip past that, then I'd be all about it. Because it's more hourly cost and another $2,000 for the block. I'm assuming, because it cost me $1,000 to get here. On top of the 20 I already added.
As much as I would love to, it's just the most appropriate use for that location. As much as I would like to just approve it without the condition, I think the fact that town council has weighed in on this kind of ties our hands that we don't really have another leg, a different leg to stand on. So I would be inclined to approve this with a condition of getting special exception for the new bays when we're ready for, when we get to that point.
Can we add something to that condition? In the event that the special exception is not granted, could it be on the condition of the special exception or the wall be compliant when it's finished built?
I think that's a given, that it wouldn't, the new wall...
Yeah, it's a good point.
If we don't get a special exception, I would imagine they can, like, kind of condition on the condition there would be that you build it outside the setback and provide us as-bills for the finished plan with the new configuration.
That would keep us from coming back if the special exception isn't given.
Correct. And I think what, what Mario's trying to avoid is if the condition just says, obtain a special exception, it's approved condition on obtaining a special exception, and you don't obtain a special exception, that conditional approval is no longer valid, and then, right, as you said, it would have to go back perpetually. But sort of two paths. If yes, you obtain a special exception, then you do this. Or if you obtain, if you don't, then you do Y. So that way, you have, you contemplate both outcomes of the special exception within the same condition. And it, a failure of the special exception doesn't echo or roll back and then cause the site plan approval to also fail.
And the as-built means you're not left with this on record.
Correct.
Yep.
Is that a motion, John?
Problematic future play.
Can I say a couple of things? I would say it would be not a bad idea to do some findings of fact first. And I believe in the staff report, there are some other potential conditions to consider, including a development agreement and some other similar things.
Did we officially reopen a public hearing on this?
We did not.
Not a bad idea.
To open a, okay. Can open a public hearing at 7:33. Are there any comments from the public on this? If that is the case, we will close the public hearing at 7:33. All right. Finding of facts, does anyone have any findings, facts for this? It's really difficult to run this without the staff.
The applicant provided us with a stormwater plan that shows no elevated levels of off-site runoff.
Looks good. The use of the property is consistent with the use that has been going on since 2019?
And the use within the zoning district?
Is, yeah.
Falls within permitted uses within the district. The applicant has made adjustments to the parking to, to abide by the setbacks?
And meet the requirements for parking.
Yeah.
The applicant has requested that if they don't meet their special exception for the bins to be within the setback, they would like to move forward with the bins out of the setback?
And provide an as-is to.
And provide the as-is. Thank you.
The applicant has presented a master sign plan, which the board has shown no objection to.
Any other finding of facts, anyone like that? All right, we'll move forward with those finding of facts. And then, John, you had referenced a few of the things in the staff report.
Yeah. So, Mike, did you have a, you seemed like you had a partial motion, was that a motion, or have you rescinded, or?
When we're ready, I would make one, but you've got a good grasp on it, John. So I would say the condition part, I prefer you to make the motion.
Okay, fair enough. So I move we provide conditional approval for this application with a condition, number one, being that they obtain a special exception for the storage bins. And should they not be able to obtain a special exception, that they move the storage bins out of the setback and provide us as-bills to document that change. Condition that they execute a developer agreement with the town, the development agreement with the town, and that the applicant shall obtain all necessary permits, including all the standard water sewer driveway permits as applicable for the application.
We need escrow.
I don't know that we need escrow, is anybody?
Or any construction inspection?
I'm not going to put that in my motion. Perhaps if we want to talk about that?
I would second.
Did you want to talk about?
No, I'm, no.
Content?
I'm content.
We have a motion on the floor in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Extentions? All right, we'll move forward with that condition.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Good luck with your work.
Good luck with your special exception. All right, so moving on to the next item on the agenda is informational and pre-application reviews. We have one from Carlton Swafford for Pine Gate Cooperative Solar Array. Is the applicant here today?
Yes.
Hello.
May it please the court. Wrong venue. I, um...
At the former courthouse.
Oh, oh, close enough. I didn't have a chance to get the enlarged. Oh, y'all have some, is this the?
The tax map parcel.
Oh, very good, very good. I've also got some preliminary, should I dust it?
Sure, please.
Along with the back page is, is the executive summary of the grant under which this project would be funded.
We can share.
Thank you.
Small to see the numbers for the setbacks. We are, I've been checking them against the zoning ordinance for correctness, but it gives you an idea of the layout of the project that we're looking at. So this is on Beach Hill Road, next to the recycling center. And the proposal is a community solar array that's group net metered, owned cooperatively by the residents of Pine Gate Cooperative. So I'm not sure if the board is familiar, but the residents there have formed a cooperative corporation and cooperatively own the land that they now manage. And this array would then be the second asset that that entity owns and manages to the benefit of the members. And so, just gaming out based on the pro forma, we anticipate that the members could see with, we have estimated like 92.4 kilowatt DC array. And with that, we estimate that the members altogether could see a little over $20,000 a year in financial benefits, which they would plan to distribute in the form of lot rent credits. So they would be paying less to the cooperative in lot rent and seeing household savings in that way. and, uh, seeing household savings in that way.
To the housing cooperative, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
So is this part of the, the Rock program, this cooperative or?
Yes, it's part of Rock New Hampshire.
Fantastic.
What is?
Congratulations.
It's resident-owned communities of New Hampshire.
Okay.
It's a part of the, the Rock USA is like the national organization, and then Rock New Hampshire is, uh, arm of the New Hampshire Community Loan Fund. It's focused on empowering LMI community ownership.
May I, Matt?
Please.
So I'm kind of curious, I don't know if you've spoken with Joseph about this. Does this meet the like disturbed area requirements and all that to actually go through site plan? I'm not curi-, I'm curious how big this is and if it meets those requirements.
I'll have to, um, disturbed area plan.
Joseph, can you clarify that?
Oh, yeah, so for the, this, the, you're referring to the scope of review for site plan review. There's a minimum amount of footprint that triggers a need for a project that is non-residential or that is not a single-family or two-family residence to go through site plan. And that minimum disturbed area is physical expansion, physical expansions or new construction of non-residential or multifamily buildings that enlarge the total building footprint either primary or accessory by more than a thousand square feet or one percent of the lot area, whichever is smaller.
How do we measure a solar array? Because, I mean, there are like arrays that are like usually, it's not a structure like in, in the sense of like a shed with a roof or something. It's a bunch of these, you know, usually slanted panels, right? And I'm curious how we even measure that. Is it the total area that contains the arrays? Or is it some fraction of that based upon the size of the actual panels? Or, I know it's probably not a common question you get.
Right, that's a great, great question. Eight by eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for that based on what we've done in the past. I mean, the town has permitted accessory solar arrays before. I'm sure we have one, but ultimately, I mean, that's, you know, the, the board is interpreting and applying these, these site plan regulations. So, I mean, ultimately, that, that determination of how to classify that, that does come with the board. And, you know, the purpose of this conceptual consultation is to, in a non-binding informational setting, talk through these kinds of things. So that's a, that's a good question. Change of use or expansion of an existing use also applies in certain cases. You know, brings in the requirement for site plan review, so.
So can I actually, in the follow-up question then?
Yeah.
So is this on its own solar array, is it on its own lot or it's, it's all one lot, right?
It's now all one lot.
So it would be an accessory use, because we actually don't allow solar as a primary use, am I correct?
Correct.
So it would be an accessory use, so the use shouldn't trigger site plan. But the size of that use might.
Generally.
However, we actually calculate that.
Good point.
I, I guess I'm having a question kind of making these two things jive. Are we talking about the solar array going in this little square here, is that?
Yes.
So this part?
Yes, there's a, it's, uh, the property was initially three parcels. We've merged the three parcels. So now the one parcel horseshoes a separate parcel.
And the access?
Yes, and so to, you're correct, to the north, the northern part of the, of the horseshoe.
This way.
Yes.
The access to it.
And right now it's a nominal space, uh, it's really, uh, nothing, just scrub.
As you, if you're pulling into the transfer station, it'd be that lot on your right where there used to be a tree company that would store some BC chip and used to keep some stuff up in there. Who's contractors, one of those had something in there?
At this point, it's not a lot, it's just part of a lot.
And that's, and it's drawn several. Just to give you, if you're looking for a visual idea of where it is, that's the approximate area referring to.
Would trees need to be removed from the lot?
Uh, minimal mature trees. Uh, we would be looking at like one and two inch.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that kind of northwestern border of trees would need to be thinned, basically is what I'm hearing?
To, uh, no. The northwestern, uh, border, uh, as in the border to the recycling center?
Correct.
No. We really are focused on southern exposure.
Right.
And so, um, uh, for this one, we would be, uh, there may be, um, to, um, the, to the west, uh,
Yeah.
toward the road, we may need to clear some.
Yeah.
But we anticipate significant vegetative screen still between Beach Hill Road and the array.
Great. Yeah, that's fantastic.
If I may make a comment, um, that's not really looking for any answers. I just want to say, first of all, it's awesome that you're part of the Rock program and that now that you're also trying to put in some alternative energy as well to offset cost for your residents, I think it's fantastic. And on top of that, the fact that your neighbor is a transfer station, you're not really going to be bothering anybody with this.
It's the perfect neighbor for a, for a transfer station, right?
And so, however those details work out, you know, with whether or not even need site plan or not and all that, I, I, I think it's a great project.
To clarify, Mr. Krist, on your point earlier, if the board finds, uh, on the issue of disturbed area, that the disturbed area is not sufficient to trigger site plan review, then does that mean we don't need a, uh, an approval from the planning board prior to, um, building?
That would be my understanding.
I've heard accessory use under that, under that size.
I would wonder from Joseph if there's any standard way in New Hampshire that we do measure the impact of solar panels, because they aren't traditional like buildings. And like how do other towns deal with that?
Yeah, it's a good question. I, I don't have that information right handy, but I, I do think that's a good question, especially as it relates to, um, the total building footprint on the site, which is the, the key phrase in site plan review, scope of review standards. So, yeah, that's, that's a good, it's a good point.
I did notice, I took, uh, I'm, uh, to clarify, I'm from Vermont Law School's Energy Clinic, representing Pine Gate in this matter. I did take a wrong turn, uh, earlier and, uh, wound up on Reservoir Road, where I did see a ground-mounted array on a single-family residence. And I wondered, uh, how the planning board treated that or if the planning board treated that with this disturbed area question.
I'm going to guess probably not.
Because it's probably small.
It's probably small enough to go under the radar and just go through a building permit if that, I don't even know, I don't even know, yeah.
What's the disturbed area limit?
So for a site plan review scope of review, it is enlarge the total building footprint by more than a thousand square feet or one percent of the lot area, whichever is smaller.
Right, because last year or the year before, when the co-op came in front of us for their little building at that land they own, um, across from Three Lakes, actually. Remember they fell within that?
Yeah.
In front of school consultant said, but by the way, we don't need to.
I mean, it's, it's a pretty small amount of disturbed area to actually.
I think that was like six hundred.
Probably it's going to be under our jurisdiction, I imagine, but it would be worth this clarifying.
And you said this power gets sold back to the co-op and then financially benefits the residents from the monetary value it produces in power.
Yes. Not to bore you with details, uh, but New Hampshire Electric Cooperative, because of, because it's a cooperative, is not required like the other utilities in New Hampshire to do on-bill crediting. And so, uh, essentially, we're doing a buy, a sell-all, um, situation where, um, all of the electricity that's produced is sold to New Hampshire Electric Cooperative, who then writes, um, Pine Gate Cooperative a check at the end of that billing period. And then they aggregate that money through the year and then distribute it the following year, annualizing it for lot rent productions.
It's the exact same thing we do with the town array.
And did Barrington do the town array, I thought?
Power was involved.
Barrington Power did the town array too.
Cool.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions with John, Mike?
One small question. Are the, the apparatus that's holding up the arrays, are they galvanized?
Yes.
I'm not, yeah, I won't make a comment. I just, I know that there, um, different metals react to the, have you heard of this, Michael? You would probably know more than I do about it, about what it does to the soil after.
As long as it dipped galvanized versus painted galvanized, it's okay. Because it's treated and hardened and it doesn't bleed. Obviously, galvanization, galvanization doesn't corrode, it is a, a protective coating. But the paint coated galvanization is really bad, because it does chip and bleed into the soil. As long as it's, I'm sure it's going to be dipped because
It's probably standard.
It's a professional, it's a commercial system, it's not a homegrown mount that you're just painting on.
I would have to confirm with Ted at Barrington on that matter.
Can I ask a, I, I don't want to have the bigger conversation here, but is any of this contingent on federal funding, which I know is a little bit dicey right now?
No, fortunately not. The, um, the grant funds, uh, that the project is to be built with come from the, um, alternative compliance payments, uh, which are funded by, uh, which are, come from the renewable portfolio standard. So when utilities, uh, don't meet their, um, renewable portfolio requirements, then they make alternative compliance payments, which goes into the revolving energy fund, renewable energy fund, and that funds, uh, several programs, one of which is the residential, um, LMI renewables.
Thank you.
What's your timeline for the project?
Yes. We did fall a little behind schedule, um, due to, uh, some faculty changes, um, at the law school. But we are looking at, um, uh, we're hoping to be interconnected and fully commissioned by October of this year. And so then that would put, uh, benefits accruing to the residents, uh, beginning in November, and then, uh, benefits flowing to the residents starting the following October.
One, um, one last question, I guess. Is there a decommissioning fee built in so that the residents there aren't hit? Because it's eventually going to be very, I would, I would guess, it gets expensive after the twenty-year term of usefulness of the panels.
Yes. As part of our, um, engineering procurement and construction agreement with Barrington, we've stipulated that they would provide, um, uh, Pine Gate with, um, an operations and maintenance manual. And, uh, the, um, clinic is also providing them with a reporting manual on the same, which includes, those two together include a pro forma, um, which sets aside certain revenues for, um, operations and maintenance expenses. The life of the array is anticipated to be around twenty-five years. Anecdotally, a lot of people are telling us to anticipate forty. But, um, uh, the operations and maintenance and decommissioning are, um, priced into the revenue so that the residents are not, um, uh, the residents actually haven't paid, um, uh, anything for the project so far. And it's a, uh, the, the grant award is a reimbursement basis, so Barrington is actually fronting, um, everything, including our recent, um, application.
So is there money being set aside for the decommissioning of it? So, so that the, the residents aren't hit with this fee that no one really knows what it might be in twenty-five to forty years? They're holding money back?
Over the life of the project.
Right.
Because it sounds like, let me say back what I think I heard. It sounds like built into the plan for the, the revenue that the project is generating is setting aside funds for maintenance.
Correct.
And that's, and decommissioned.
And decommissioned.
And decommissioned.
And is that decommission money sit in escrow for twenty-five years? So, you know, just, you know, who's the principal of that, I'd be curious? And this might be too much detail for tonight, but just brings up, you know, say if Barrington Power was the principal of that decommission fund and Barrington Power was no longer with us when that became decommissioned and all of a sudden, hey, we need that money to properly dispose of said solar array. And, uh, you know, the person, the principal of that money wasn't around. I'm just curious. If you do, off the top of your head, where that, what, where that might be?
Uh, we've worked out the mechanics of the financing, but I haven't answered that question yet. That's a good question.
Thank you.
And, and I, I would guess it's probably better questions asked by the residents, not necessarily
Us, yeah.
The planning board, which really isn't our purview.
We're just curious.
Yeah, and I, same thing with me.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I just have a quick question. You said Barrington's actually putting the money up and funding it, is it ever, so are they the owners of it and it gets transferred to the co-op?
Yes, at, um, at, uh, excuse me, at commissioning, at interconnection and commissioning, then they transfer title.
I know, I know we don't have to, but I don't know whether the chair would like to let the board ask a question. I know there's one resident.
Yeah, I would like to see if anyone in the public would like to speak as well. I'll open the floor, the, uh, to the public, if anyone would like to speak from the public at seven fifty-eight.
Well, I live right on the corner of Beach Hill Road and I have forty-nine panels on, on my garage. I'm not a big fan of the solar part of it.
I'm sorry, I just, no, do you mind stepping to the microphone, just because I know if we have people online, we can't. They're not going to be able to hear us. Thank you, I appreciate that.
I'm Forrest Howes, live around the corner of Beach Hill Road, just down the street from where they're proposing. I'd be interested in talking with you after the fact, a little bit about my solar array, because I don't think mine is set up right, because it doesn't really work for me, but that's irregardless. I'm guessing that your panels, where you drive up into the recycling center, your panels will be, that'll be the back of the panels adjacent to that, because that's due south going out, because my, my panels point due, due south. Am I correct with that? Yeah, that's about it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Forrest.
If there are no other comments from the public, I will close the public hearing at seven fifty-nine. Sir, do you, uh, do you have any more comments you wanted to share with us at all?
I guess my, um, only question, um, the two questions that I need to answer, um, uh, is the galvanized concern and then the principle of the decommissioning, uh, fund. The question that I, uh, have is with regard to defining the disturbed area and, uh, whether, um, uh, we would in fact be required to submit a site plan for review.
Joseph, how do you, how can we get some more clarification on the disturbed area of solar arrays?
Yes, so I mean, I'll, I'll just say that what I had done, which is, uh, it's a reasonable, uh, question of how to interpret that. I had simply scaled off the square drawn in for the panels and, and taken that amount. But it's, it's a fair point that that may not actually be the footprint of the panels. Beyond that, I don't know. I could seek some input from Tom Newcomb, the building inspector. He issues a lot of solar panel permits. See how he handles that, if indeed, uh, that has to be dealt with. A lot of these panels are rooftop mounted, so footprint doesn't really come into play with those. But there may be some that are, I, I'm sure there are some freestanding, uh, small accessory panels around town. I, I could talk to him, um, and, and get some input. And then if the, certainly if the, you know, applicant has a, has a recommendation on that from their experience, you know, Barrington Power, and, and I'm sure, uh, you know, Carlson and, and others have done this in, in many, many towns. have done this in, in many, many towns. I know they're, they're a respected firm. Um, I, I'm sure they could perhaps tell us how other towns have treated building footprint too, and that, that could be, um, informative, uh, you know, if we don't have a standard, that is, that we've been using. But yes, truthfully, I, I used a scale to just generally get the, uh, get the size of this rectangle drawn into the plan, which is usually a good metric for what the footprint is going to be, but it, it may not be in this particular circumstance, given the unique shape of the, of the object.
What did you get for an estimate?
Uh, I had measured only the top panel, put a, put it about 1,500 square feet, if I'm not mistaken, and then that, that got over a thousand, so I
Actually stopped.
The others.
Got it.
I don't know if that's, if that's about in line. You may have a better, a better estimate than I do, perhaps.
That sounds about right. The other question that I had, um, was pertaining to, um, the, excuse me here, the, on the site plan review regulations, uh, for the application procedures, um, for notices, um, it had said, notice of submission of a completed application shall be given by the board to the applicant, uh, holders of the conservation and preservation or agricultural preservation restrictions. And then the, this is the clause that I'm not sure about, abutters at least 10 days prior to the submission. It, uh, does that mean that we should be notifying the abutters 10 days prior to our submission of the site plan review submission?
That is a part of the process that, that we in, in Town Hall handle, so, uh, based on the abutter information that's provided to us by the applicant, the town will, will send out, uh, letters certified or verified mail notices to, uh, the parties on that abutters list, which is initially provided to us by the applicant, though we do double check. Uh, but yeah, that, that's something that we at Town Hall handle. I mean, some towns I know do ask the applicant to send those letters, uh, but Plymouth has always had our practice be that we get, we in Town Hall get provided the list and then we send out the letters.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Appreciate y'all's time.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Carlson.
No other questions from the board on that matter? All right, excellent. Great.
Forrest also wanted to come in for a, uh, informational and conceptual conversation, uh, but that was after the agenda had been created.
Okay. I have no issue, um, let's see, let's make sure, seven. You have no issue whatsoever if the board agrees that, uh, Forrest to come up and speak for an informational session? Okay with it.
Yep.
And I did print out a little snippet of the tax map, which is nearby, but a little bit south of the previous conceptual, and it is the parcel ID numbers and, and parcel lines from, from, just from tax map data, um, which highlights actually a, a separate manufactured housing park, and then, uh, the property at the corner of Beach Hill and Fairgrounds.
Excellent, thank you. Good evening.
Hi.
Hello.
So what I've got, um, in a nutshell is, uh, my wife's uncle has a piece of land. If you look at the tax map, there's a little finger that goes from the back of my property. I'm gonna circle this for you. Where am I here?
It's your house.
Okay, this is cutting it off, but thi- this is the, this is the area in particular. Carpenter Park.
Can everybody see what he's circling?
No, it's okay.
We, we can actually kind of pass it around.
So, here's the map. His property is right on the corner.
Oh, Mike, you should have, uh, you should have one that looks like this. That actually has Forrest's property.
Okay, right here. Oh, it shows it.
Perfect. Yeah, so he's, this is, see my property, this is Bill Carpenter's piece. His trailer park is through here, and it has this little finger. Um, Bill being my wife's uncle, has offered us this piece of property.
Joseph's bringing up the, um, Forrest right behind you, if you don't mind identifying it on that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
So this is my property. This is Carpenter Trailer Park. Um, my wife's uncle, Bill Carpenter, has offered, if we could take this line right across here, he's offered to give this to us, because what's happening right now is WPNH Radio Tower lets us pasture our horses up here. Okay? 94 years old. If his day does come and this gets sold, if the new owners say, hey, no, no, we, we don't want you going through here, we would have to take our horses out down Fairgrounds Road all the way around and in. Um, so they've offered this piece right here to us, but keep in mind, this is all, I call it pond, other people call it swamp.
It's wetland.
It's wetland.
Yes. So, you know, 75% of that is not usable. This little piece here is actually part of my pasture that I have right now that Bill has let us use for all these years. Um, I didn't know what the protocol was gonna be. I mean, he kind of explained it to me as to what was gonna happen. Ideally, you have to have a surveyor come in and survey all this and spend thousands of dollars and move this site plan, I, move this, this landline. When, none of us are disputing the lot lines. Everything is the way it is, other than my property would go to here, to the radio tower, and this would come right straight across. So I'm only gathering information tonight before I go out and spend thousands of dollars on a surveyor, um, to come back and have guys tell me that you shouldn't need to do that.
So your property is the southeast corner? Yeah, okay, thank you.
This is all mine, right here, three acres. Yep.
Yep, I understand.
This is the radio tower that they let me use and, and, uh,
You wanna assure access?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, he did actually mention the other day about if this didn't get given to me or moved over to me, that we could do an easement or something like that. That way, if this was sold, I wouldn't be locked out and having to take horses all the way around to get in the pasture.
Yep, so.
So that, that's all I'm here tonight for, is just to pick your brains a little bit. He was very clear the other day at the office, uh, downstairs, as to what was going on. Um, but I just, I just thought I'd, it's better to ask questions.
Certainly, certainly.
We're, we're not, we're not losing, like, lot frontage that's gonna be a problem here, right?
Yeah, so the Carpenter Park does have frontage on, uh, Beach Hill Road as well as private road, Carpenter Park Road.
That's, that's all fine then.
And they couldn't put a, they couldn't put a road through that piece anyway, because of the wetland.
Or it'd be some frontage off Fairgrounds, but nothing that's practical in any means whatsoever.
I mean, it looks, looks fine to me. Looks, I don't, it seems, seems pretty straightforward, I think. I think.
So I could see it being a lot line adjustment.
Yeah.
I can also maybe see an easement being, I don't know if that's our purview of speaking about, um,
It's like their choice.
It's a non-binding advisory session, so we can offer advice.
Advice.
So an easement might be a thing, might be a potential avenue for you to go, to have an easement for what best suits you
Yep.
In your future, and easement recorded through there?
Yeah, what, what the carpenters are more so thinking was that if they go to sell it, instead of having this little dog leg off of here, it would just be a rectangular.
It's cleaner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I personally like that.
Being family, they're, they're like, why don't you can have it?
Yeah.
It's not the most valuable.
No, no, like I say, it
With the pond, you say?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I call it a pond, other people call it a swamp. I mean, we've got ducks and frogs and turtles and all the above there. There was two geese in there tonight when I was there, uh, two wood ducks and three mallards, so I mean.
It's great.
Yeah.
That's an awful corner to bring horses down.
Yeah, it'd be a challenge.
Yeah.
It seems pretty straightforward, I think.
I think so, yeah.
I think so too.
So yeah, if I could have a little advisement, I don't know who's this was, um, for going forward, if I would need to, um, still get the property surveyed and all that type of thing, or or if this could be just something that goes to Haverhill or wherever they make lot line adjustments, or.
Can you speak on that potentially? I'm, I'm not too
Well, I was saying, you, you can request waivers if you don't think it's necessary and it's burdensome for what is probably a pretty small change, and it's up to us whether we grant those waivers. Um, my, my gut here tells me that personally, me on this board, I probably wouldn't have a big problem with some of those waivers for like resurveying and stuff like that, um, especially if everybody seems to be on the same page. Um, would it be helpful to have some kind of affidavit from the other owner that they're on the same page with that, or I don't even know?
Well, yeah, the other owner would also need to sign the, uh, the boundary line adjustment application.
Yeah, anyway, yeah, okay.
Yep, and then.
So basically, you do have to come to the board with a boundary line adjustment. You can't just go straight to the county, right? That was one of your basic questions, correct?
Or whether or not we need waivers, I think. I, I, I would, I would write a, a quick, easy letter saying, I want these waivers, and, um, Joseph can probably help you with which ones those are. Um, that the board will probably, I'm guessing, I don't really know for sure, though. In the past, people often signed off on.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I will say that often the board has said, um, you know, we don't need the survey of the entire property lines, but typically for the registry of deeds to record a plan, they do need at least the part being transferred to be on a plan that is stamped.
Yeah.
So that, but that's something that, um, you know, the, the registry requirements may, um, dictate to a certain extent, but there, the board has, as far as I recall, in the past, granted waivers of surveying the entire property lines of both parcels and, and allowed, you know, just showing the affected area of the adjustment. That's, that, that's been done in the past, you know, that I can recall.
Taking the magnitude of Carpenter Park and the, what seems as the simplicity of what we're discussing, I feel that I would probably be comfortable with that area being surveyed and not the entire park is probably how I, how I would be.
The town's still gonna get their taxes, it's just to be from me instead of them, but.
All right, that's good. Excellent. Any other questions for us, or does that sort of give you an idea?
No, I guess the next thing would be is I'll touch base with him tomorrow or next week, or whatever happens to be, and we'll, uh, try to get going forward with this.
Some good protection for the future.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Do we have any other public comments?
What about other business from the board and staff?
Other business from the board staff?
I actually have three comments I want to make.
Please.
Um, first, I, I want to say, Matt, fantastic job.
Thank you.
And second, I want to say that all the zoning amendments, um, last week, um, including the petition zoning amendment passed by a wide margin, which is kudos to the board and the town. And I also want to follow up on something Joseph mentioned in passing, I think, the last meeting, that the New Hampshire Municipal Association has updated its website with a bunch of case law, example, uh, recent case law, and one of them was from 2024, the last, this past year, um, in Franklin. And I think it relates directly to some conversations that we've had on this board over the past year or so. Um, and the basic outcome being that it is not legal to deny an application solely on the purpose of, on the purpose provisions of a zoning ordinance. And I mentioned that because when we were talking about the hotel, there was a lot of discussion. Now, whether or not we denied it on that or not, um, there was a lot of discussion about the purpose, um, statements in our zoning ordinance, and whether the hotel complied with our purpose statements. And, um, and there was some discussion of whether that is even binding. And I will, so the New Hampshire courts decided in 2024 that no, that is not binding. The purpose statements are not grounds for denying an application. So it's good to consider that in two ways. A, in the decisions we make, that we can't base them just on the purpose statement, and B, when we're writing any zoning amendments, to make sure we're not relying on the purpose statements to carry our intent.
So it's a, is a purpose statement should not be.
The purpose statement is like a preamble saying, like, this is what we're trying to do, but this, this next part is the part that actually binds us.
Yeah.
Sort of like mixing a master plan and the actual
Yeah.
Matter of the law.
Exactly.
Yep. Well, thank you for that update.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, John.
Mike? I'm not sure whether, um, we can talk about a specific application. I don't believe we can, but I, I just wanted to thank you, John, for bringing that up, but, yeah, I, I, I don't wanna, yeah.
I don't want to reopen that.
Yeah, I don't either.
It was, it, it, it came up in those discussions quite a bit, um, those purpose statements and what they mean, and because it came up, I thought it was important to at least clarify for the future. Um, and I, I, I specifically said, I don't know exactly how we decided that case, um, before us, um, but certainly going forward, I think it's important to clarify for us and any members of the public who might come before us, that, um, we cannot rely on purpose statements to determine any of our decisions.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, if I remember.
I, I don't want to reopen the case.
I don't either.
I just think going forward, cause I know we had these discussions, it's good to keep that in mind.
Very much so. Agreed. Excellent, thank you.
And Matt, I have one quick couple comments that I would love to. Okay. Did you see the Orno?
What's that?
The Orno interpretation of RSA to
Oh, uh, 91A?
Yeah.
There's a really great flow chart on the New Hampshire Municipal Association website, um, that provides some really good guidance on that.
So, just to be really short, um, as much as I can, there was, um, representation that I had gone against RSA 91 dash A, and so I was a little, little vague, and I didn't quite understand it, but I did, uh, reach out to Orr in Reno, um, an attorney Eggleton, Eggleton, who advised me that what I did, um, email to John and Sue and then to Phil, did not go against RSA, made a number of comments, and then a sub-conclusion that it did, that, uh, as they, as it was all shown, all the emails did not involve a quorum, did not facilitate deliberation, and were not intended to bypass the public meeting requirements. It's something for you to read, but basically, nothing that I did with those emails was against the RSA, um, that was mentioned last month.
Let me just say, I have read this document, and, um, I could very minutely go through this and counter some of the statements, including the quorum statement, which, um, I don't want to necessarily waste any of the board's time in doing that, however.
Mike, you're providing this to us
Yes.
Tonight, not to go over and
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna rehash everything, but, I mean, there's many statements that he made, and, and in John's statement, s, a year ago, said, you know, it's a quorum unless you're talking about an agenda or, um, an agenda item, or what was the other thing? And it was talking about an agenda item. So I, I wanted to make that clear to the board, because I, I would have felt bad if I had, very much felt bad if I had gone against the RSA 91A. I do feel that, um, there were wide swings from 2021 and what we were doing with proposed zoning changes. It went one way, which some people call snob, snob zoning, all the way to the other end of the spectrum with what we're doing, and a lot of the stuff that we've done, I've been very much in favor of and, and liked. Um, but I kind of feel like it's good to have points of view from many different aspects and different people. Um, but it's, the planning board ha, it, it's a very big responsibility, and I've always taken it, um, to heart and realize the responsibility of the planning board is huge, especially for Plymouth, where it's a challenge, especially being on the select board. It's a challenge to control the property taxes, because we don't have a lake that we have property on to help, um, take care of our schools and to help put money in without adding kids. kids, because they might be second homes on a lake. So I've always done my best with property taxes in the back of my mind, what is best. And so I just, as I leave, I hope that you guys all keep that in mind. It's extremely important, especially to this town, which is such a challenge, so. Anyway, I really enjoyed being, this is a great board, and I appreciate all the respect that we've had for each other in talking and our communication. And as one person, as many have said, you know, the town appreciates the discussions that we have, that hopefully we, we arrive at the right conclusion. So I wish you guys all the best.
And thank you, Mike.
It's been a pleasure, all of you. John, pleasure.
Well, I don't even know what to say anymore, Mike. Thank you very much for your comments and sharing this with us. And if people would like to review it further, that you have a copy now, and we can go from there. Do any other members of the board, planning staff, no one else in the public, have any comments they'd like to make before we adjourn?
Just to note that I sent out a couple of pieces of information, the new planning board handbook and the law, case law document via email. The new revised zoning is on the website. If anybody wants a paper copy, it would be, just let me know, shoot me an email if you want it, and I can print those out for you for the next meeting, if you want to have a paper copy of the new one. So just let me know otherwise, those, the new planning board handbook, new planning board case law book, and registrations for the Planning and Zoning Conference webinar in May, I want to say. I don't have the date offhand, but it's in the email. So I encourage you to take a look at that, if you can make it, register, attend. It's a, it's a great training, it's a great either refresher, or maybe you can go to a different session and learn something new. It's, you know, highly recommend. And then, yeah, those are my, those are my other businesses.
All right, excellent. So do you have anything else for us?
Nothing else from me.
Thank you for attending tonight. Do we have a motion to adjourn from anyone?
I moved to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. Honorable Phil.